This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, it's 10 o'clock on Tuesday, September 5th. This is a pre-submission proposal that was submitted to the planning, it's going to be submitted to the planning board. And just, I would like to get started. And first of all, according to Paul, who suggested I sort of run the show here for a minute, his suggested agenda was to first to have everyone introduce themselves so we'll know who's here. Maybe start at the top.
Charlie, can I get a health agent for Southampton?
Jerry Swanson, health director for Southampton.
Mark Arnold, I'm on the planning board.
George Russell, conservation agent.
Richard Harrison, planning consultant, planning board.
Bob Cannon, one of the principals presenting the project.
Parker Reed from Heritage Land Surveying and Engineering, working with the applicants on the project. Todd Baron, one of the potential developers.
Bill Cannon, landscape architect.
Dave Lupin, one of the potential developers.
Rich Pasoli, fire chief.
Ian Ellesworth, police chief.
General Bree, property owner.
Lupin, chief judge.
Ron Lawrence, bill inspector.
And given that, we're going to turn the floor over to Mark and have him do a presentation of the...
Sure. So Bob, yeah, Bob was going to do a little bit of presentation and then we could talk about the plans after he's done.
Okay.
Okay. So, we, everybody knows that we submitted the plan prior to, on a much more limited basis, where we were just doing the condos. And we did not have the commercial lots, nor did we have any control over anything else. So when it got shot down, based upon something that we did not know, the zoning board had to have a supermajority. And while there were only four people there, three voted for, one voted against it. And ultimately, when it went to the planning board, five people were in favor of us moving forward, and then against. So we had eight for and one against. And that was enough to derail the project. So we got together, presented it, talked to the owner of the land, and have presented the project in its entirety. So it's a mixed-use project that has commercial and residential. Our, a year of a 55 and older condo complex has not changed. There's 40 units of condos for 55 and older, of which there'll be a combination of one and two bedrooms. So we're aware that this is on zone two, and it's environmentally sensitive land, that you have to be aware of the affluent that happens on the property. So we're under the number that gets to having to go to DEP. So that, we've kind of figured out, and a lot of it, and had to go to one bedroom versus two bedrooms. But most of the people, if you're aware, Palmory Street, Palmory Manor Road, in Southampton, they have 40-unit condo project with only one bedroom per unit. And the marketplace has absorbed them easily. We just sold one for a lot more than we're asking, which is kind of typical. Typically, never get to us because they're sold before they even, you know, get to the market, because of the number of people who go to the condo association and looking for units. So there's a number of things that this does, including the marketplace, for those people that aren't aware, is very, very, let's say, supply and demand are way out of balance. And the demand is so high that we typically, what we do is, we put it on, like, a week later, advertise it, and we typically sell it at the open house, and multiple offers. Most of them, the number of cash hunters, almost half of people have cash. But people that are really in trouble are first-time homebuyers, who've been in the market for three, four years and not able to buy a house. So this has, this is a showing of what we're offering and trying to do. And you can see that a lot of it's still open space, and the 55 and older condo units are 350 feet to 400 feet off the road. The units themselves are Craftsman-style, two- and three-car garage units, and they're upper-end units, that we expect to go on the market between 550 and 600. That is, as a project that just happened to be stamped on a level road, same thing, they're 550 to 600, they're all gone. 16 units in a year. And the demand that we have, a lot of people who've expressed interest in them. So these are the commercial units. And this is an idea that shows three units, but they potentially could have four commercial units, highway business, zone property. And just an idea, just to give them a idea, this is, you know, you could put this type, or you could go two or three, depending on who shows up and who's interested. We do have people who are talking to us about potentially developing one or two of the commercial properties. And we, you know, we are running into a little bit of problem with a couple of different issues. And we wanted to put this together to see if there's an opening, if there's an option. And the biggest hurdle that we had last time was the affordable units. And for those people on the planning board and other people, it says that we have to do 10% of the number of units to be affordable. So we have 40 units, that means four. Our units cost about $500,000 to build, which I know sounds like a lot of money, and I'm not saying it's not a lot of money, but in the real estate world, it's starting point for new construction. And unfortunately, that's where we're faced, and that's where we're at. And we generally think that four units of affordable, the affordable number, with the research that we've done, my partner Todd has done a lot of research, in what that is, and they can afford about 160. So that means on the units that cost 500, you're losing 340,000 a unit. And if you multiply that times four, you're 1.4 million. And if you told me we could make 1.4 million on the entire project, we'd take it and run, because it's impossible to absorb that. And there's a reason why there's not been a affordable unit done with new subdivisions. Even the subdivisions that are cul-de-sacs, they go to nine, and they never get to 10, because that means you do one house, the one house that you do, you can't build a house for less than 500 or 600, a new, new single-family house. And so bottom line is, is that if you can only sell it for 200, you're losing 400 in that one house. And the typical profit margin, for those people that aren't aware, that is, if you make 10% on a unit, you're lucky. You're lucky, and sometimes it's much less than that. So there's a lot of risk and no reward, and there's not going to be an option to do any affordable units if you can't get to a project that actually can absorb it. And in this particular instance, I know that there is language in the zoning that we looked at that says that the planning board has a right to allow them to be moved off-site. And that's the only way it potentially works for us, and by the way, I don't think anybody else will ever do it. So there is a project, there's a lot here that originally was going to go to the town and the council on aging. They have not been interested in it. And so therefore, the owner of the property will donate this, so that we can put these units up for around 200 apiece, which gets very close to what the affordable number is. They're kind of like anybody aware of town fire condos, they're about 800 square feet. This right here. So this shows you kind of what you can do for that kind of money, if you get the land for nothing. If you get the land, if you don't get the land for nothing, then you can't even come close, you're looking at losing 50,000 a unit. So can't, can't do it.
Bob, where would you put that?
This, right here. It would be right here at the end of the cul-de-sac, right next to, there's a four-acre parcel that's shown, and the town has not expressed an interest. I've talked to lots of people in town who've come to me and said, they think it's a great place. Initially, I talked to the police, the fire, I talked to a bunch of people, and there is, you know, they think it's a good spot. If they decide that that's a good spot for it, there's land there available. If not, the owner will keep it, and he'll do something else with it.
So this is kind of like a master plan for the entire parcel?
Right.
That we wanted to put together, under the new zoning and the changes that's coming up, which I'm not sure exactly when the attorney general's going to approve that change, it would go before the planning board. So that, we did an entire master plan concept, calculations relative to affluent discharge receptive. As Bob mentioned, we're under the threshold to keep it onboard, including the safety complex, which we're hopeful that that's still an option, because the owners are still offering that to the town, as well as what Bob just mentioned about is the affordable housing lot, so that those numbers can work.
So this is, this is a general idea of what we have in mind. We think that a lot of people have expressed an interest being across from other commercial property, where you've got a bank, and you've got a place to eat, and you've got a Dunkin' Donuts, and there'll be some other commercial units there. And potentially, the bike path, which kind of has taken moves. I know you've still got some hurdles to jump, but at the same time, if a bike path goes there, it's ideal for people here, who in addition to walk around the neighborhood, would be able to go onto the bike path and take advantage of the greenway there. So that's our concept in general. We wanted, we didn't want to, we think it's a good project, we think it's a good piece of land, we think Southampton's a great place to build, I think it's a great, a 55 and older project brings in, we're estimating between the commercial and the residential lots, somewhere around $300,000 in tax dollars, where the only tear that they have to deal with is the road itself. And if you're being a 55 and older, you're not looking at any other expenses that are associated with it. And that 300,000, if you break it down to, you know, what the town can do with it potentially, if they decide that they want the safety complex to go there, bottom line is, it comes close to paying for it. If you're talking about something that's somewhere between 8 and 10 million dollars. So that's our thinking, that's where we're at. I'm interested in seeing how people feel about it that are in town. And we realize there are some things that we're asking for, which is off-siteing that could be affordable. If the current, if at the current language stays, there'll be no affordable units. So we're talking, like, the CPA has been in effect for 15 years, and you've got no affordable units. And this gives you four, which is, last time I checked, thousands of percent higher than what you have currently. And this is all market, the marketplace in general goes from here to here, and this being affordable, and this being, so they've targeted, the state has targeted affordable with a lot of money, but they haven't addressed the problems of the real estate market, because as they target this end, this end here, there's multiple bids on property, and rising, and rising, and rising, and pretty soon, you're not going to have housing that people can afford to buy. So anyways, this is, this is where we're at, so we can open it up to people.
Let me just comment on, I appreciate the challenge of the affordable housing.
Yeah.
Especially when it's privately, essentially, it's privately subsidized housing development.
Yep.
The challenge for the town is inclusion in zoning bylaw provision says, that's intended that the units will be included on the state's LIP program, local initiative program, for the subsidized housing inventory. The challenge of that is, the state has standards and process has to go through to have units included there, which means the state would have to review the design plan as well. And their guidelines include things such as, the affordable units must be indistinguishable from market rate units as viewed from the exterior. Units must conform, or must contain complete living facilities, that's not an issue. Affordable units must be proportionally distributed throughout a project in terms of both location and unit size type.
Okay.
That's a challenge, and I'm not sure how the state wouldn't view this, but I think what it basically says is, you would need to go through the state process as well to have them approve it, be sure that doesn't...
Hold on just a second. So, I understand, but also there is language in there that you have a right to offset it. Our intention is that this is one condo association, this is another for the four units. So it is a separate parcel, where you do have some language in the zoning that says you can off-site the units, otherwise, what you're asking for is not doable. So I mean, everybody can write a law that has nothing to do with potentially giving us affordable housing, because you need it.
I, I don't disagree with you on that, I'm just saying, and it's up to the town to decide how they want to interpret it. But look, in their, the town's bylaw, which I didn't write, it says that's the intent, and the state rules say, to include, be included in the LIP program, you gotta go through their design review process, and these are the design standards the state requires be met, be, I mean, to be there. I think it's up to the town to decide how they want to interpret their zoning bylaw, but I would have to advise the planning board, this is what you require.
Well, where's the part that says that you can do, you can off-site the affordable units?
That, that's fine, and you, but, but you still have to meet the LIP program standards, and the state has to be able to review that and approve that. I think there's some contradiction there, and that's a challenge. And that's the reason you generally don't see internal subsidy-type development projects, usually there's some type of tax credit or something to help fund that affordable housing component, subsidize it that way.
I just want to comment on this. There is a precedent, which is in Northampton, and they built Emerson Way, which has, I believe, 63 single-family units, one of which in the development is affordable, it's a duplex actually. And what the town did, because the planning board had discretion based on its understanding of the state requirements, is they allowed units to be built across Bird's Pit Road on a separate development in what was Wetland, they got a, they got a special permit to be able to build there. They built, I believe, eight units on that parcel, and they are markedly different in construction and size and quality than the market rate units which are across the street. Those are now 600, 700, 800,000, they're selling for Emerson Way. And the affordable housing units were built by Backyard ADU, as you may have heard of them, they build small houses. And so they built these small houses, and they, with all due respect to the people there, they're chicken coops. Yet, the town approved it. So there is a precedent, and also, I understand, and I'm no expert in the state zoning regarding affordable housing, although I've done some research, the past two and a half years we've been working on this. There is discretion left to the town, and it's a question of what's the town's appetite? What the town's needs?
And the question's, what would the state then accept those as part of the SHI?
And there's some discretion there too, especially with an over 55.
But again, it's the state's decision on that, and that's, I'm just saying, you're going to go through the process with the state, be sure the state's going to accept units.
I guess one of the thoughts I have is, this, these affordable housing units are not being paid by any town money.
It doesn't matter?
I understand that it doesn't make any difference relative to the state, but it is, in my mind, you know, a large difference, whereas, if somebody wanted to come in and propose a four-unit, multifamily unit house, and go before the planning board to get a permit, then they could sell it for 200,000 apiece, or whatever, 250 apiece. Essentially, it's affordable.
Yeah.
And it's, it is very complicated.
The challenge is...
Yep.
Again, my, my point is that you didn't go through the state process to get, and they, they may grant the waiver and say, that's fine, and that's good, and that's what you want to achieve. But, but the town doesn't have authority to waive the state requirements for the LIP program, the state has its own authority for that.
Richard, let me, from a, from a planning standpoint, I really think that the, the town, should they buy into this concept and everything else, be part of the proponent for this affordable housing. And not leave the developer, you know, waving around in the wind about these, the subtle nuances in interpretations of the zoning bylaw here, that up to now, have really made development affordable housing not possible. And to me, there has to be a joint effort between the town and the applicant in here to approach the state on the same, look, we think we can work with this, we can work with it being a part of this project, but having its own separate identity, and we think the mark, the, the level at which they're going to build these at is acceptable to the town. So the town, I think the town needs to be, needs to step in on this.
I would suggest that the process would be that you go through the local permitting process, if the planning board approves, or the town approves it, with the condition that the state approves, the, the town then goes with the applicant, says, we've approved the site, we've approved the plans, it meets our objectives, we want to be sure that it, that you're fine with it, so that it does include...
I'm saying the same thing.
So it does achieve the objective of inclusion of bylaw, of being added to the SHI.
And the only thing I'd like to add to it, I'm in the real estate business every day, I did an open, I did a homebuyer's open house at the beginning of the year, I had 30 people there. And they worked back in the market for three years, most of them made multiple offers on houses, all over the asking price, and the tiers and the people upset, were so upset that they, they have given up, frustrated, pulled out of the housing market, moved to different towns, where the prices in Springfield and/or Chicagoee might be a lot lower than places they prefer to live. And the intent is to create affordable housing. And if you have to massage the regulation, so that you get what you want, which is some affordable housing, and in general, this goes to a much larger perspective of the marketplace, that the supply and demand are way out of balance. And somebody's got to stand up for the people that don't own a house, or we're going to look a lot like Californians, where they can't afford any houses. My, my son paid 2.3 million for a house that we didn't owe for 400,000. And there, and the number of people that I've had come in and buying a house from California to this area, I sold four houses in October, where the people from California bought the house, never saw it, saw it online, didn't inspect it, and paid cash for it. Meanwhile, the people who live here, the teachers and other people who are living at today's income, can't afford to buy a house. So in order, in order to resolve this from a much bigger perspective, supply and demand have to be put, bought in balance, otherwise, you're going to have escalation, and you won't have price stability. So that's the only thing I want to say about that, is somebody's got to stand up, and somebody's got to say, hey, enough is enough. You know, being regulated by stuff that has hurdles and turns, and it's, you can't do it because of this, you can't do it because of that, yet you want affordable housing, yet you haven't produced one in 14 years.
Bob?
Yep.
The affordable housing units are going to be privately owned?
Yes.
Okay, it's not going to be some kind of corporation thing with the town or anything like that?
Privately owned. Our intention was to build them, and then turn them over to the town, it has to be an approved body that will screen the applicant. We have, in East Hampton, on Caddis Street, the new building that's going here, there's 21 rental units, five of them are affordable. It's being done by the Northampton Housing Authority, you've got to go apply there, which is a nightmare. And they choose who gets to live there. All of the other ones that are 16 units are all rented, we rented them all before they were even built. So that's how, that's the demand that's out there for housing in general, including apartments and so forth. And so the Southampton can either set up their own criteria, as I understand it, of the affordable, and how you apply for the affordable units, we turn it over to them, we build it, because that's what our guys do, is build it, and you're going to get to decide who wins the lottery, so to speak, for these units here.
Change gears? Stormwater management? Commercial buildings in front of Route 10?
So what we, what we've done with that, Charlie, is that when this whole stormwater system gets developed, we're going to include these units, the commercial units, in the front, within the system itself. So it's kind of like a full build-out.
You're not going to pick up anything off of Route 10 and redirect it?
Correct. We've got to look at that closely, because Route 10 doesn't have any drainage within it. Right now, it's all sheet floor, constant of property, we need to look at that aspect of it. But the intention is for the parking lots that are located behind, would be included within the drainage system. And with this plan, I know that we're the same as before, is we only have one cul-de-sac going in, so there's only one entrance coming into this entire project, not only for the safety complex, but for the residential and the three commercial lots, so you don't have multiple driveways going out to College Highway, you have one point of entry into it.
And there'll be a sidewalk on that side?
Correct. Right, there's a sidewalk on this side, which will extend up College Highway and meet the existing sidewalk, which is that park place.
But it won't go north?
Correct. Right now, it's, we're not proposing anything going to...
No, it's more important to have it connected to the existing sidewalk. That, that provides direct accessibility from a walking standpoint to the goods and services that might be utilized by this project.
But it could be extended, Charlie, along the front edge of these two commercial units, so that somebody in the commercial units could walk.
It, it, what I'm looking at is just, as Charlie wandering the village, the people from Greenbrier Estates right now walk the curb to get over to all that, and if you're going to be building down to that corner there, well, not to Gun Road, but at least to their higher driveway, might be a place to take and talk to DOT about a crosswalk and...
Yes. The, the way this, if I can chime in a little bit, the way some of the interior pedestrian circulation has been envisioned, is that it's rather interior-wise. There are connecting sidewalks between the commercial uses...
And I respect that, I understand that, I'm just looking at the, the current situation on Route 10.
Yeah.
And the fact that this might be a way of alleviating a little bit of a hazard there.
Yep.
This is not...
It might, it may be more appropriate on the other side of the street, since that's where it's located.
Then that wouldn't be your responsibility, but...
Right, and also, there, there, there's some vacant land there for sale as well, that is being advertised for commercial. You know, it may be some, something of the Southampton's burden to kind of deal with that, should something come on, online, to develop that vacant parcel. Just, just a reminder here, it hasn't been brought up, but this entire parcel is, is zoned between commercial village, which is the first 300-foot depth from the street, and residential village for the entire balance of the project. Coming from a planning standpoint, you can't, you can't get any better of an accommodation, I feel, than what we're proposing here, because it fits into what's been zoned, appropriately zoned like this for, I don't know, 10, 12, 15 years, Mark?
40.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, so we're in... Yeah, so we're in a situation here where we're proposing this project kind of shows a mixed use, mixed density, mixed use density, residential density, commercial. And there is even a public component here and an affordable housing component here. Not to mention the proximity to goods and services, hence the reason why I brought that other drawing that shows the proximity. But this is a fantastic opportunity here to kind of link this up with the future greenway. And we've got other elements of this project that we're going to be managing on-site. We've got soils and everything else that we're kind of dealing with that are totally appropriate for this use. And Mark has mentioned that we are desperately, and we've done a lot of research on trying to, for this density, come in line with the nitrate loadings and everything else for this area.
When I ask a question, I ask the question only because I'm trying to understand.
Right.
I overall view this as a viable improvement to the community in that area. But I also have the wonderful position of when something goes wrong, of being the bad guy that shows up and says, something went wrong here.
Yes. Understood. Understood, Charlie.
It's all on lot septic? All independent per parcel?
Yes.
Okay.
Every unit has their own septic. This is part of the concept that each unit is freestanding. Each unit will have their own septic system. Each unit will be responsible for their own septic system, which brings in a tremendous control factor where people who live there are going to actually understand what a septic system is with the information that we provide them and that they should be pumped every three to five years, depending on the usage. And they will be responsible for it. We expect our condo fees to be very reasonable. So if you're a homeowner, you buy one of these and you take care of it, your septic system, and I'll yield to the Board of Health here, will last their lifetime and better. And we think that that's another strong proponent of this particular idea or concept. And the freestanding condos are becoming very popular all around Western Mass. You'll find out that they're very desirable. People love the idea of having their own home, not connected to another home, and being able to be responsible for how that property is maintained and taken care of.
So let me ask a question. It's a condo association paying in dues.
Yeah.
Would it be practical to take and put into this that every three years, the condo association has all these tanks pumped? Instead of relying on the individuals who are coming from California and have never seen a septic tank?
I actually will think that's a good idea with the information that's available that they get. And also, that's how you can get systems cleaned. If somebody's coming in and doing all of the systems, you're going to get a break from the contractor that comes in and starts pumping these septic systems. You can get it. I'm sure you can make your deal with whoever's pumping it and say, listen, we've got 40 units that need to be pumped. And they're not just there for pumping one unit.
Even my little village, I do the same thing. I get the contractor to do all the houses and everything in one shot.
Right.
Because it reduces all the fees.
Charles' point is, and especially with the four B units, you tend to have first-time home buyers who probably won't have experience with the septic tank maintenance. And if they're just having to pay into a condo fee and the condo association takes care of that, it makes it easier for that transition home buyer.
Yeah, we actually think it's a good idea, you know, in terms of the condo rules and regulations and so forth that go forth to the consumer. Thank God for Title V, because I remember selling units before Title V came into place. And I would walk into the seller's unit and say, where's your septic system? And they'd look at me and they'd say, what are you talking about? They didn't know there was a septic system. And of course, went to the local program or whatever. And this is the, when you're coming from the city and you used water and sewer your entire life, you don't understand what it means to have a septic. And a septic works perfect if you understand it. And we have to become educated, and we plan on educating our homeowners.
Or that avoids a problem with, let's say, 40 units and 35 of them do a great job and five of them don't do it. Then everybody gets impacted.
All you need is one to go bad. And everybody's pissed off at each other. Public water supply. Have you done your pressure calculations and volume relative to the supply line on Route 10?
So we haven't, yeah, we haven't done any of that yet, Charlie. There will be a looped water system coming down the cul-de-sac road and connecting to an existing dead-end water main on Lynn Drive. And then a subsequent loop through the project itself.
So you'll be picking up the dead end on Lynn Drive?
Correct. That's going to help with Lynn Drive.
Yeah. No, it's a good thing. I saw it, yeah.
Because right now, it's a dead-end water main on Lynn Drive. So we haven't really gotten to those calculations and flow tests and everything.
A couple of questions. Just ripping off that, at the end of Helen Drive, it looks like there'll be something for emergency access. Would that be like easement maintained or retained by the town or something along those lines?
Correct. So the idea is to have gated emergency access to Lynn Drive. So we're both going to gate across it, which should be maintained by the homeowners association. The responsibility on the town's part is cul-de-sac.
Gotcha. Mostly Park Place?
Correct. Yeah. Everything else within here is the homeowners association.
Mark, would that gate allow for pedestrian access?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, basically to keep vehicles from.
Right, right. But my point is, I think it would be great if we pick up then those three neighborhoods, Helen Drive, Helen Lynn, Karen, and Palmero Meadow Extension, now have safe access to the bike trail.
Correct.
Huge plots for those neighborhoods.
Correct, because we are providing an access point down to the future rail trail. So yes.
I like the thought that's gone into this plan, this editorial thought, as far as planning for Southampton.
Just one other note about sidewalks. So the main roadway coming in, you see it is kind of white there. That is going to meet all the subdivision rules, regulations of the town.
Oh, we have to for.
Yes, right. Not only that, we've already gone through the planning board experience once on it. That would be a 26-foot wide roadway. And the cul-de-sac that we are showing proposing is what is a very much oversized cul-de-sac so that it can accommodate some turnaround and everything else for perhaps the apparatus from the fire department or whatever. We felt that that oversizing of that cul-de-sac there would be accommodating for that possible use. It is intended that this may loop here, that if you will, coming from here and all the way around in here, will have a sidewalk on it as well. And we've shown even including that sidewalks within the interior. So we've got kind of a nice open space that goes, that weaves its ways through the Marcy Ray residence units where we're going to put in a sidewalk. And that goes through all the open space. It hooks up to a potential recreation area. And that will give access out to the greenway access as well. So there's lots of things going on with what we're trying to do with accommodating, making the open space of this project very accommodating for pedestrian use.
One question regarding the open space and the access to the greenway, tell me about access from the south. And is that going to be open to the public? I mean, this will be private property. This whole condo is going to be a private property. Is the open space and the access from south up through that to access down to the greenway, that can be open to the public because it will be on private property?
So the way I anticipate handling that is that in terms of coming off of Lynn Drive and somewhere early in here, having access with a right-of-way for the public to get there. We have to be somewhat careful about analyzing that it's not a negative for all of the people that live there. So having them come through and go through the property and people don't know who they are could be a potential issue. So our intention is to have right-of-way where the public has access to the bike path, which, and he stamped on the bike path, extremely popular. And I know there are some people that no matter what you do, don't like the idea of bike path. But I'll tell you, it improves the life, the quality of life for the people who live there. And it's an excellent, excellent.
Will that be an improved right-of-way?
Yes. And I need to interject here for a second since I've been kind of working on this whole design here for almost a year now and everything else. I think that some other element of this thought would come out from my end with the prospective developers and the owners of this thing is to make, create a public easement from Lynn Drive up to the point where we have the greenway access, okay? And that greenway, the access driveway to the greenway because not only will accommodate pedestrian traffic coming from the other neighborhoods in here, but it needs to be accessible. That would also accommodate access for the stormwater management system that we are tending to develop along the greenway. So there needs to be access for that, whether it's by the town or whatever. I don't know yet. But you know, if this lot here, for instance, gets developed by the town, they own it, there is some contribution to the stormwater management system from that use. There's going to have to be a little bit of a co-mingling of responsibilities there, if you will, for maintaining that stormwater management system. And so there may have to be some kind of easement access, at least from Lynn Drive out to here for that purpose. That's a good question, and.
We need to.
I think it's good access because it will be a safe access and it will be developed and it will be worked out so that vehicles will need to use that access for the stormwater management maintenance.
On that point, think of things. One, things essential that there be interconnection with the bike way. And in your submission to the planning board, I think you probably want to have a separate sheet that simply lays out the access way, how the greenway will be accessed by the public and by residents here. So that there's a very clear description of that graphically and in your narrative with this mission.
Something that doesn't really kind of show up in this, although you can kind of feel it here with what's happening with a lot of this wooded open space in this area here. This is pretty level in here, but then it kind of starts to drop off here. So there is some topography in here that this access point would accommodate that connectivity with the greenway. And a lot of the other areas here, because of the topographical difference, you know, we'd have to kind of work that out a little bit.
You're probably looking at a 30-foot deviation of elevation relative to.
At least. Yes.
Right, right. Speaking of, call me whatever you like. You've done that for years.
Not then, Charlie.
You've been very careful.
Yes.
Speaking of stormwater, are we looking at retention basins that are going to drain out within three days?
Yes.
Okay, so we're not.
Because of sandy soils.
I suspected that, but I wanted to ask the question because I've gotten into all kinds of things from larbsides to whatever.
Right.
All right, so that's good.
So if I can add on to what Mark is saying too, is we've got, there's a lot of impervious coverage and everything else on the commercial lots and the lot that may be donated. There is potential for doing a little bit onsite stormwater management for say like a two-year storm. And then allowing the overflows into the system along the main roadway. And then that would hit the cul-de-sac at the end of the town street and find its way to the stormwater management system at the lower elevations.
Are you looking at any oil separators in the lots?
Yeah, we're going to have to, that's part of the DPs, policy. So you have to pre-treat before you go into infiltration.
So that will happen on each site, right, Mark?
Right. Essentially, so even for these commercial lots, each probably is going to have to have its own oil-water separator. The safety complex, of course, will.
Safety complex is also going to need a tight tank.
Correct, and some other.
Yeah, that's.
That's down.
So, yeah. If it ever gets there.
Yeah. One other question regarding the.
I'm optimistic.
Regarding stormwater, I know you haven't finalized the design yet, but I see that large development auto pavement area heading down to your stormwater management system. And I know there's going to be an outflow from that, maybe probably a point source discharge. No, necessary point source from the strict technical definition, but that entire retention area is going to have an outflow somewhere and it's going to be outflowing directly onto the greenway. And at that point of discharge, how is that going to impact the greenway area? Do you want to put a cove under it or? At some point, there's going to be a concentrated source coming off of that.
So that's part of the final designs on it, Mark? That we've got to get into. We've got topographical information on the entire site. We're waiting to try to get approval, preliminary approval from the town before we go to the next level of design and expense.
I'm just worried about that discharge.
Yeah, correct.
Direct impacting the.
So in this, in this particular piece of property, there is an existing culvert that goes underneath the rail trail or the railroad. There's a series of swales and berms along the railroad that are kind of unnatural. The only wetlands is a small little wetland area over here in the entire parcel of land. So all the wetlands or all the work will be well outside the 100-foot buffer zone for the project, being relative to Conservation Commission. But we will have to look at that and comply with all the rights.
Yeah, topographically speaking, Mark, I mean, believe it or not, I mean, there are some elements to this site and everything else that are very conducive for what we're proposing here and everything else. And already, it's a natural state here. I say natural state because at some point in time, when they built the railroad, they created, they elevated the railroad. And they inadvertently or purposely created a linear low point all along that whole railroad bit on our side of the, on both sides, but particularly on our side of our property and everything else, which is very accommodating for a system that we can, that we feel can meet the demands of the project.
Well, one of the other things before, I don't forget, I can repeat here, is that the commercial lots, we've had interest from different parties. And in fact, there is a standing offer, although verbally at this stage because they're afraid to get involved. So the zoning says that certain type of businesses that locate here has to have one parking place for every 10 square feet of space in the unit, commercial unit. And based upon the party that wants to go here, they say that they need to put, based upon the size of the building that they want to build, you need 140 parking places, which of course is a no-go for them. And there are other, they have these stores everywhere in all rural areas. They say they need 40 to 45 parking places. I would suggest that, of course, being environmentally sensitive, the last thing you want to do is cover all the land with pavement. And they won't come, and neither will. And they won't come, and neither will many other places come if that's the criteria. And somehow, some way, when you only need 40 to 45 and you have a much more manageable piece of pavement that goes over the property than 140 parking places, that is not necessary and is way overkill. So somehow, some way, that is the, that is something that we need guidance. Can it be done?
It's a retail store?
It's a retail store.
And how many square feet is the building?
10,000.
There's going to be a need for more than 40 or 50 parking spaces.
That's what they have, that's their model unit everywhere.
Because typically...
Where'd they go?
Typical retail parking requirement is on the top end, five per thousand. And more commonly nowadays, it's three to four units spaces per thousand.
So let me just, I need to chime in here because I was given that scenario to look at. Bob gave it to me. Bill, see what you can do to kind of fit this, see what the possibilities are fitting this scenario within the framework of the commercial village zoning. So this parcel right here, which, when we originally submitted to the planning board was two lots, so we make it one lot and everything else, we can accommodate the building size that was requested by this potential buyer. It's a 76 by 140 foot footprint, which is about 10,000 gross square feet. And I usually subscribe because I've worked with the zoning bylaws all the time and everything else, that between 4,000 and 5,000, between four or five cars per thousand gross square feet seems to be, that's where most of the zoning bylaws that I've worked with...
Five is the upper limit.
Yes, right. So this particular graphic depiction right here indicates that I can accommodate this footprint with 52 spaces, which is about right at that five cars per unit and everything else. So I did some due diligence as a landscape architect to try to see how that would be accommodated here and everything else. And again, this lot would be a little over two acres, so it seems like everything would kind of fit very nicely on it, not only to provide some maybe initial stormwater management, but accessibility for services and, you know, providing the goods to the building itself can be accommodated on this as well.
And I think that's, going to have to be a discussion with the board, requesting a waiver from the parking requirements because they really don't fit the needs that are out there. And I don't know, I don't know when those were produced.
I look at the...
Let's say 40 years ago.
Look at the old Big Y in South Halle, which was about 50,000 square foot building, and it didn't have that many parking spaces.
Right.
The new one probably is about 60,000 square feet, I guess, and it probably has made that amount of parking spaces. I don't understand why you would need that much.
When I read the zoning, if you pardon me for a little bit, I'm completely mystified by some of those zoning requirements and the town of Southampton's bylaws for some of that stuff because it seems to be, it's just kind of totally unrealistic with the norms that I deal with and law with the other communities, be that as it may, you know, that's something we're going to have to grapple with.
Waste disposal, residents are responsible for their own?
No. That would be part of the condo association fees where they would pick up on a certain day. They'll be able to negotiate with some contractor that would come pick up the...
But it'd be in front of the homes?
Yes.
All right, there wouldn't be a common area for all this collection?
In front of their homes. I would say, yeah, because they're like single-family homes.
I'm just understanding it. And the commercial is going to be the commercial.
Yep.
All right.
Does that make sense to you?
Yes.
I defer to a guy that knows a lot about this.
I know a lot of trash.
I don't. Anybody else have any questions about...
This is a slight question, maybe it's a permitting question, maybe it's not relevant at this point in time, but the commercial lots that you have, frontal commercial lots that you have on the north side of the main driveway, those are two lots, is that correct? And you have a, what you call, like earlier, I think a right-of-way servicing both of those. I'm curious as well enough, that may require a common driveway application permit because you have a driveway serving more than one lot. But I think that's sort of a technical process.
Correct, it may require that.
Right.
Mark, we felt it was so important to have all the entrances to these lots accessible.
It's just a procedural process, I agree with the concept, yes.
It's not only for these two commercial lots, but it really affects the safety complex if that gets built and this commercial lot. The same aspect of it, there'll be a common driveway that would serve the commercial and the safety complex. The intent is that the safety complex would be coming in and out through the building.
And the other aspect is...
I concur, the concept is just procedural.
Yeah, correct. And we may need to do that, Mark.
I think it'll also increase likelihood of mass duty up to...
Correct.
Approving any permit you need from them.
Correct.
And post-remediation, yeah.
Correct.
I just, another two cents worth here is that, you know, when we have these mixed-use type of developments, there are always these cross uses and duplicate uses and multi uses and everything else. Actually, it makes, it makes the implementation a little bit more complicated, but I think everybody is willing to kind of work with that in order to come up with a comprehensive plan that gives you this mixed-use diversity and it's a lot more sustainable and everything else in light of this, what we're trying to do here.
And just so you know, on the commercial village, there legally are four lots that meet zoning requirements. We showed only three here because it is somebody interested, but it potentially could be divided into four and could be adjusted into two. So it depends on who shows up, who the buyers are, what their needs are, and, you know, hopefully we have what we think is somebody who is perfect for a rural community type of setting and are in many, many rural towns across the state.
I guarantee you, if you went out there and built 140 space parking lot in five years, you'd be putting something else in the middle of the parking spot.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think that that's appropriate for our use. You can only imagine, Richard, right? The kiosks and everything else, you know, you got, yeah.
Bill, the access to the Greenway will be wide enough for emergency vehicle like an ambulance or a police cruiser?
I think that that access way has to be at least 12 to 14 feet wide.
All right.
Because we're going to have to get down to maintain the stormwater system?
Well, I was just thinking when I broke my leg on the bike path that I need the ambulance to pick me up.
Yeah.
They're just going to leave me.
Yeah, so...
I'll throw me in the back of the pickup.
Yeah, and, you know, we'll have to do some site engineering to make the grades work between the higher levels and meeting the Greenway and that kind of stuff. That's going to be important.
How about our law enforcement and fire safety people, have any questions on that?
I don't have any concerns about traffic safety. As far as pedestrian safety, I would, I know Charlie mentioned something about sidewalk. I would discourage people who green buyer crossing at the northern part of this because that's close to the apex of that turn, where there's not so much of a visibility. But as far as the entrance ways, I don't have any concern with visibility or pedestrian traffic.
I guess, I think for us, it's just truck access. I gave, you know, our truck size and I also included, he stamped in Ladder Truck measurements just, you know, to be able to get in there and get out, you know, without any difficulty. So, and obviously hydrant placement, but that's in the future.
Now, we, I need to get this clarified by everybody in this room in here. Should something like the safety complex go here, that's what you're referring to with your alignment issues and everything else?
Well, I mean, you know, one of the, has an issue with down in the corner, you know, we need to be able to get our fire trucks in there to, you know, say right in quickly.
And that's why we felt in this particular case, and this was something that Mark and I collaborated on, is that going to that oversized cul-de-sac at the end of the roadway was going to kind of accommodate these issues a little bit.
Right.
And even the interior doors will be wide enough to accommodate.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Was there any potential, I don't know if you guys have any, police or fire have any issues with this, but I know you're, I don't know what you're proposing the name of the road to be, but Parsons Village, are, were you aware there's a Parsons Way kind of around the corner? And you don't anticipate any issues with that?
Yeah, they have Parsons Village in East Hampton, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, they do.
And we are going to be combining with East Hampton Dispatch.
It's a minor technicality.
And...
We haven't really picked a name for the street.
We pulled that out because we thought the council agent, so unfortunately, David Parsons is my wife's uncle, and she's the executor of the estate. Knowing how much he has contributed to the town, we wanted to honor him. However, we are going to have to be careful if we bring in the Parsons name. Since then, it looks like the council agent has decided on something different than this, which frees up this parcel for the affordable units, and we will obviously not get a name that would be, it's actually a problem. Parsons Way, I'm aware of a primary metal room, and Parsons Village in East Hampton. Yes, but likely put our heads together and come up with a different name that's not going to be a problem.
Mark Green Village.
Fox, one other thing, just noted earlier, that public access to the bike path, right? Because people are accessing it through private property, you'll get complaints of trespassing and so forth, and it's something that we want...
Just be clear.
Something that we're going to have to work at. We got to figure that out for everybody, but I understand the issue of getting access to the bike path. I like the idea, we have to talk about this, I like the idea of having to come in just off of the property and so that it's not going to be an issue for these people who are buying luxury condos. And we have to keep in mind that our customer and client that we actually get to buy these things are going to have expectations. And we're not asking, we're not putting up, you know, everyday condos, but I will tell you that even in single-family homes, nobody's building small single-family homes. If you do see one, let me know, because I haven't seen one. Everything's a mansion for houses on single-family, and it's the same thing with condos because the cost of materials and the cost of building, you have to make sure that you have a product that the consumer wants. And last thing we want to do is build a project there. People have a hard time justifying value, and we expect this to be, I'm used to that. I'm probably 10 to 15 condo projects from start to finish. I'm aware of what they look for.
I think the reality has to be acknowledged that we've got a bike way here, we've got point A to point B, people will find the quickest, easiest paved access point. And it's, I think it's better to acknowledge that and have easement designed to accommodate that, that minimizes intrusion to the homeowners, at the same time recognizes that people aren't going to go out of the way to get to, they're going to take the simplest, most direct paved access route.
Sure. I agree. That's what we got to put some thought into this.
So obviously, you've kind of heard a couple of philosophical differences with that and everything else, and that's for us to kind of ferret out as to how we're exactly going to work it. I, you know, I strongly feel that if we build something and everything else, that's going to accommodate the use in a safe, safe way and everything else, but we'll have to, we'll have to kind of...
And that's why I said in your submission, I think there should be a separate sheet that graphically depicts what the actual route is going to be like and in narrative, of course, that.
Okay.
Yep, we agree.
I think it's a lovely project. I was in favor of it previously, and I think it's ideal for the town. And it would be nice to have the safety complex there, too.
Might be interesting to see, I mean, I haven't talked to the previous fire chief and the current police chief, and I had positive vibes from our conversations that it could work, but again, we understand that there's no commitment and that you guys will have a committee that's going to explore options for it. Jim LaBrie's dad was a fire chief, I'm sure most people are aware of that, and Jim and Eugene, who owned the property, have, they live in town, very concerned about the town, very interested in the best interests of the town, wanted to donate that to the town because they know there's a real need for it. And having been both, you know, it'd be nice to have something that's modern and actually can accommodate it, yeah.
So in addition to that, I took those wishes, I don't know if this necessarily apologizes being, for being, you know, oblivious to what the town's process has been going through for the safety complex, but I took it as a challenge to try to take the prototype that you guys were working with and everything else and try to see how that would kind of fit in with this 4.3 acre site and everything else. And I came up with a combination for that building with accessibility, the parking and everything else. So just kind of pardon my interest in it a little bit and everything else, but I felt it was important, everybody felt it was important there to kind of show how that might fit in with the overall mixed-use project.
I think it's important because currently there is a public safety building committee, and we're approaching that process of site evaluations and to know this layout is something that we should make sure that the committee will work out as well as the engineering company.
Please share this plan with me.
So if we can forward this, I don't know, as long as it's all right with Bob and everything else, we can kind of forward this plan at some point in time if you wanted to share it with your consultants and everything else. You know, I don't know if you're all right with doing this and everything else. It's kind of like an important step to try to get with the committee and get with your consultants and everything else, and here's a bona fide, you know, proposal and everything else, this actually fits up with what we want to try to do, so.
Anybody else have questions about anything? Really appreciate the opportunity to get feedback from everybody and to see, engage the interest on, you know, there's some things that are impossible to get over, so open-minded, but at the same time, economically, it's going to work for not only us, but for the consumer. And I'm aware of what things go for in different communities. Something's a great place to live with lots of pluses for it and the demand and the desirability are, we've had multiple people approach us and say, hey, this works, I'm interested. So I know there'll be a lot of interest in it, but at the same time, we have constraints, it's got to be within market value and buyers have to see the value of buying that. And we think that this does it.
Realistic, what is, realistically speaking, not ideal, but realistically, what do you think your timeframe is?
I would be shocked if it's three years.
In terms of submitting...
So we're hoping to get things... So we're hoping to get things submitted to the planning board probably after the first of the year, so that we can get approval. We'll have to go through definitive subdivision, plan submission and so forth, so that potentially you can start construction in, you know, late spring of 2024.
We've done a detailed, we've done a detailed survey, Richard, of the whole property. So we have that in the can, so to speak, which would certainly help us with doing the definitive plans.
Usually, questions will come at me after this stuff's rolled around in my head a little bit. Who is going to be the point of contact? Is it you, Bob, or Mark, Bill, Jim?
I would say that I would be the point of contact. My partners are Todd Baron, who's always available, he's got a lot of time on his hands, but just kidding. And Dave and his son Luke, the P. But they'll be busy working on the project. They'll be there at the site all the time. Easy to get a hold of. Ask your wife. Fortunately, I. But anyways, you've got my numbers. I can reach by anybody anytime, and I'm working usually second.
Yeah, we think there's some, there'd be some elements of coming through and preparing the definitive plans that we'll want to get some input for dimensional issues. Hey, this is what we're going to kind of do here, and everything else, stuffs, location of hydrants, whatever, you know. So there might be some interaction with some of the town departments to make sure that we've got the plans in accordance to the individual departments. I, I'm a big proponent of working with the departments and creating definitive plans, rather than just kind of like submitting the plans and then having to go through a bunch of review processes and revisions and everything else. So Mark, Mark, you know Mark, he knows all you guys and everything else. There'll be a little bit of an input process in here for sure to develop the definitive plans.
That approach always works best.
What's that?
That approach always works best. I had one developer who actually submitted a preliminary plan for subdivision when I worked in South Hampton, that didn't consult with anybody. Nobody knew it was coming. All we knew is, one day, this plan got dropped off, the application fees, and he said, what? And need to say, he had a lot of comments from departments that it didn't go anywhere.
I'm looking at, this is a design process. This, you know, we want to work with the departments, with the town, everything else, just the best product possible.
I just wanted to kind of bring up that we were kind of got involved with this project from a building standpoint. I've been building homes and developing for almost 40 years now. So we kind of got involved, and so did I. So we're going to be the contacts that you'll be seeing all the time. We're going to be out there from day one. We're going to oversee all the road construction, all the infrastructure work, as well as all the construction at the end of the months. So when it comes down to any issues that are on-site, we'll be the ones, you know, obviously, there's other people to go through in this situation, but we'll be the ones that'll be out there on a daily basis from start to finish. I think we've talked about the build-out time. I think realistically, I'd like to see this three, three years of physical build-out once we start construction of the units. The one good thing that, you know, we have to kind of work with the building department as far as getting permitting for individual units as roads still being constructed. We will be controlling both aspects of that. So I'm not going to have another off-site contractor in there building the road. We'll be doing all the work ourselves, which is going to kind of alleviate that problem. I'm not going to be worrying about caving foundations in for units as I'm trying to finish roads. I can shut them down, work on the roads as I can see fit and need to be done. So I think it's going to help streamline a lot of the project that way.
Other than the big cul-de-sac road, the rest of them are private, right?
Yeah, I guess.
Correct. That should simplify things.
Great. And just to let you know that Todd, as a partner, lives in Southampton. I work the Southampton market. I've been doing it since 1979. I have lots of friends here, lots of people I know, lots of people I like, and a lot of people that I have had good words to say about us. And Dave and his son did the Lazy D condo, 60 units over there, and had great success, and both of them are hard workers and good people to work with, and are approachable.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for all showing up. I really appreciate your input.
Thank you.